Charlie, we're a little bit late, but.
It's late to get in there.
Yeah.
First on the agenda is discussion of the runoff on Hart Street. Property and internet stream and internet stream. That's you, Mrs. Bernato.
I have these pictures here, they're in order according to what I'm gonna say about them. So you can either pass them down. There's another set here.
Oh, excuse me a minute.
Yeah.
Can we approve the minutes for the last meeting first, please?
Okay, with, just with a typo error, cross off the word "our" in one, two, three, four, we heard a request. If you look at it. Okay, here, you can take a look, I already did it on that one. Then I moved it, we.
Accept the meetings with the.
Accept, accept the minutes from the December meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go again, sorry, Mrs. Bernato, but on your way.
My name is Sylvia Bernato, I live at five, six, three Hart Street. I'm here today to discuss the runoff onto our property from five, seven, eight Hart Street. This issue has an order of conditions, and I have the DEP number if you need it. You have the order of conditions. Okay, according to what I understand about order of conditions, it states that all silt stays on the property owner's land. Okay, to this date, that has not been the case. The property owner has attempted to migrate the problem, but has not succeeded. At the start of construction, we gave the property owner bales of hay to help with the problem. We also called the property owner to let him know the silt was rapidly accumulating in our pond. These are four, there are four separate issues with the runoff that I will discuss, and you have the pictures. First is the silt fence. They're photos amok, ten, seventeen, and eleven, five. The property owner had installed a silt fence, but the fence came down shortly after. The fence was down from October until now, so the runoff onto our property continues. The sock, what, conservation visited the property at five, seven, eight Hart Street, and was told to put a sock in. The sock was installed by the property owner on the west-south side of the property. It was installed two weeks later and two rainstorms later. The sock was laid across the property, but the water still ran around the sock and under the sock. There's two, there should be two photos there. Then we have the problem with the sand. The sand, at the start of December, we witnessed the property owner shoveling sand with his bobcat into his driveway, presumably to help with the runoff. But, this only made it apparently worse because sand is silt and goes into the road. There's also photos of that. And then we have what he made was what I call a waterfall. It is on, it is on the east side of the driveway. Apparently, he had been pushing his brush and his gravel onto the east side of that driveway to make his driveway bigger, and it caused like, an enormous amount of water to come out of that property. It comes down so fast, it looks like, you know, I'm at Yosemite watching the waterfalls. And then it not only did that, so it damaged our basement. We had to hire a contractor to dig a ditch, because half my basement was flooded with the water that continues to come out of his property immediately. The, and I'm like, why is this costing me money? This water needs to stop. The flooding has been an issue from the beginning, from the time he started working there. It's always been an issue. So, the runoff and the silt problem has not stopped. The runoff continues to flow onto our property and into our ponds. Additionally, our property is less than one mile to the salt marsh. We were also concerned about the silt polluting those waters. We asked the commission immediately issue a cease and desist to the property owner. I believe it's conservation's responsibility that the abutis property isn't damaged as a result of construction. Also, I'd like to, at the end of this, I'd like an explanation of exactly what a cease and desist is, and when do you stop the cease and desist? Is he allowed to work on the, on the property or the house, or, or does he have to fix the problem first? I don't know. That's it. How do you like that?
Everyone has a copy of the order of conditions, and it's very explicit. It covers all the points that she's made, and then some. The special conditions from our local Bible are attached, and they repeat the same thing. It's the property owner's responsibility to zero runoff.
Is there anything in your deed about that?
In my deed?
Yeah, I know in my deed I'm allowed to drink water on my neighbor's property.
No, because he's been there for fifty-five years.
Well, this goes back to like eighteen hundreds.
Yeah, well, I don't think. Drinking water onto my property, it's coming down.
If we give him one week to set up everything properly, or initiate a finding process to.
It should be done personally, not by a letter. It should appear at the property, and show him, he hasn't copied the order of conditions that he's gonna have.
Can I say something? He doesn't even have his DEP number that anybody can see posted on the road, next to his house, wherever he's supposed to put it.
We can address that issue too, but.
Yeah, so. I understand. But, I don't think we need a week to do anything, he knows that this is supposed to be done.
No, no, but I'm saying, I'm saying, once he is notified, he has to have everything complete, done properly within a week.
There's no way he could complete what he needs to do in a week.
No, I'm saying about barriers, siltation, proper siltation barriers to get everything done.
Morgan, one. Jack already mentioned this a few times, because of the space between the house and the street, it should be multiple.
Yeah.
All of this should be taken care of with, as far as what they call.
The original order of conditions said he had to put a silt fence along the property line.
If you look at.
And cross over to the driveway. I don't think that's an order.
Yeah, I mean, with the span and the distance and everything that's going on, it's gotta be multiple. You gotta put color what you want, water baths in there, multiple barriers, and he's gotta get his driveway to run off, not down, but off, and hold it on properly. I mean, and it's.
Put away from the losing thing, it's, driveway's not gonna get its water fin solid.
No, but it doesn't have to, Charlie, it's, be whatever it is. If you put in, like I say, what they call water baths, so you can control runoff, you can't, you can't leave an open roadway, which is driveway is, like right straight down front. And it's steep, and there's a long distance, and it's not stabilized material.
You available Saturday?
As far as I know, it should be, yeah.
Well, why don't we set a meeting with the.
I won't, I'm not gonna be here.
No, I mean, we're down and.
I'm not going.
Yeah.
Head to the Caribbean?
Yep.
I can be there anytime.
What time?
It's either, good for you guys, ten or eleven. What time do you usually get there? What time?
He's still there.
He gets there on the weekend, anywhere between nine and eleven would be safe.
Ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock.
And in this picture here, there's all silt fence running up here that might as well not have.
They've seen that.
Oh, you've seen that?
Yeah.
The silt fence, first of all, someone was there for silt fence. It's way too long a distance, and if it's not installed properly, you're not gonna hold it back.
The biggest.
The biggest, the biggest problem.
The biggest problem he has.
The biggest problem, Bill, is all these guys around here don't know how to work on a hill.
They don't.
And you're trying to explain it to them, and I'm not picking on anybody, but they don't know how to work on a hill.
That's quite obvious to me, Jack.
Yeah, and they try and.
What I, what I wanna explain to you is that, when he made his driveway, he just pushed material, everything that was in there, he just pushed it. And it, and it's, and it's about this high, and it rims the whole length of his east side of his property line. And all the water that come from the three lots above him used to hit that, and kind of meander easy down along everybody's grass, and, but now it has infiltrated that burn, and it's, it's coming right out this high off the ground, and it's, and it's mud. That's what he needs to fix first. Then he's gotta do the driveway, then he's gotta do the area that he cleaned out. And I'm not sure about that area anyway, yet. Isn't there something about over an acre?
For what? Not when you follow the.
An acre, two acre or something?
The land disturbance permit doesn't apply to the conservation commission. I said the land disturbance.
That's what I meant, land disturbance.
It doesn't apply to conservation.
Okay, all right. But every time that silt has come onto my property, I've notified him, and I've notified you guys. And I record all that. So I'm, I had it brought up to here.
With us too.
Huh?
With us too.
Yeah. With you guys too. So I'm building the case against everyone.
Ten o'clock Saturday?
Ten o'clock Saturday.
I'll bring a copy of the other conditions, just in case he has, had one for a while.
Ask away, Sylvia, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
So I'm gonna ask you something, he has no trespassing signs, so does that mean for you?
No.
No? Okay.
For you.
For me?
For you.
Correct, of course. Anyway. So, now, when you go there, what do you tell him? Like, how to fix it, the amount of time to fix it?
We're not gonna bring a list with us, but I'm pretty sure we have a good idea what we're gonna tell him.
Yeah, so, does he have an amount of time to comply to that?
It would be the right thing to do, yes.
Like, how long? Like, am I gonna have to wait through fifteen rainstorms?
I think a week would be sufficient.
A week, okay. Because, you know, people are slow on the uptake sometimes. And then, my other question is, so a week goes by, and he has done nothing, what happens?
We'll issue an enforcement order, we'll make him do what he has to do.
You make him do it.
Up to this point, we haven't issued any enforcement orders against the property.
Charlie, okay, his house is way out of the wetland area. If we issue an enforcement order, is that going to, is that gonna deal just with the wetland area?
No, because we're dealing with the wetland area in front of his house.
Yeah, right.
He's moving the wetland area, and, and then further down, ponds on adjoining property.
So what I'm saying, what will an enforcement order actually stop or do? It's not gonna stop you from building a house, no.
Make them correct runoff.
Well, that's what it says right here, that he's required to, if an enforcement order's gonna halt all construction, then obviously he has to fix the problems that he's creating with the neighbors.
So that's what I'm asking, the enforcement order will stop construction on the side of.
Everything, yes.
He can't put his siding up or none of that? He has to fix his problem?
No.
Okay, that, that's what I, that's what I was after.
I mean, we can make that point to him when we visit, so that there's no hassle.
Okay, that, that's what I was after, so that would stop all action except the reparation of the problem?
Yeah.
So he couldn't do a septic system, he couldn't do, he can't do anything? Okay.
Yeah, we make that.
He can't, he can't go in and put siding up in his house and.
Well, I guess he could go inside the house, as long as he's not doing anything outside. I'm pretty sure that inside of the house is, is open game.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing I worry about is that you go down there and tell him, this is what you should do, like Jim did, and he doesn't, and it doesn't work, and he said, well, I did what you told me to do.
And what do you want us to do? Put it in ourselves?
Huh? No.
But I mean, if, if it doesn't, just put it in there, Bill, if it doesn't work, he's getting to come up with something else.
Like hiring somebody?
First of all, it's not up to us to go down there and hold his hand.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So I mean, neither, either he takes our suggestions, or he hires an engineer.
Well, maybe that would be the best thing for him to hire an engineer.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it's.
Because Jim went down and talked to him.
Yeah, well, it's.
He did what I suggested, well, he actually suggested that, the sock fence.
Yeah.
And, and I knew that those things worked pretty well, but not in that steep hill.
There's too, there's too much, there's too much length, there's too much length.
Jack has suggested before.
Yes.
That there be sequential.
I mean, it's.
Here he is.
Yeah.
Anyway.
No, I mean, if you, if you go over, anytime, anytime you work on steep grounds, you cut in what they call water baths, and, and all you have to do is put a light spail in there. So any of that runoff is gonna get us slowed down, maybe it'll keep running, but it'll just come over. And you, you put them in such a way, so it runs left to right, or just left or just right, it'll slow it down. And like I say, the picture of his driveway, that's wide open.
Oh, the driveway, and then he put sand on it.
There's no ditches, there's no water baths, there's nothing.
That thing is gonna run right down, the sand.
He put sand the day you came.
I, I saw that, I couldn't believe it.
Neither could I.
Because that's just gonna run right out.
And it did.
He probably doesn't know. I mean, he figured dirt's dirt, but.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, we'll see what happens.
I don't know if we wanna have Brian here to talk about the turtles, or should we go on to the property that, and, and that'll make Brian happy too? Hey, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I thought you were sleeping.
Nope, you ready now?
You wanted to, well, how about the number two thing, what's that involve, Charlie?
It doesn't involve us, actually, they're gonna replace poles on Main Street, and it's exempt from the wetland act, so this not a problem.
Okay, so we, we, the only thing we got left is this.
Number, no, we got, we got the, yeah, the land and Brian.
Right, so it's not gonna take long, everybody's read this.
Okay, Brian, why don't you come here and take a look at this, if you want to?
Do you wanna look at it?
Okay. I think, no, it's what I talked to you about earlier, okay? I think you'll like this. No, because that's gonna be what he's gonna be involved in later, right?
No idea.
Brian, he's gonna be.
Not involved in this?
Well, no, no.
This is a turnaround on one thirty-eight.
Yeah, but isn't that part of Broad Cove with the turtles, huh?
Not with the turtle, that's a turtle, no turtle see him.
Oh, I thought the turtles were here, okay.
No.
Well, that's okay, then you can hold off, just sit there, okay? I don't move.
Don't eat anything, just. Somebody make a motion or?
Okay, yeah, we have an offer here from Simon Construction to purchase a parcel of land of approximately five acres on Broad Cove. It borders the southern part of Dayton, one thirty-eight bordering Somerset land, and the price he's willing to sell it for is twenty thousand dollars. The property is book number nineteen, zero, nine, three, page eighty-five. Okay, and I'll move that we purchase this property as part of our conservation to protect Broad Cove.
I have a question. We started off getting property on Broad Cove, and I thought the idea was to get all of the marsh.
Wait, there has to be a second first before discussion.
Well, I'm just posing a question to your proposal.
Okay.
And, I'm in favor of getting the property, but I'm also in favor of getting any property that becomes available to us around Broad Cove, not select the properties, all the properties, like one.
Okay.
Good point.
Well, I admit a little resistance the last time, we did have an offer that we didn't take up.
Right.
Okay, motion was made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Brian. We need a couple of copies of the minutes for our new accountant and for the select.
I'd like a copy of the proposals from the.
I can't hear you.
Give them one of these.
Huh?
Yeah.
That what you want?
Take one, Charlie, give me, take the bottom one, give me the top one.
Where are the turtles, son? Ready?
Where are the turtles?
Which turtles?
Well, you want the top one or the bottom?
That's yours, you take that one.
That's okay, that's, I thought they were in the Broad Cove here.
Those are them, yeah.
Actually, the, the most productive spot he has at the trap is where my stream comes into the salt marsh that's being not filtered. Just in a matter of, get the point.
Where your, your stream goes?
Cross one, cross Elm Street, cross one thirty-eight, right down where he traps.
Where, where is, is that north or south of the apple orchard?
South, south.
So, okay, south, so, so that stream does go into the Broad Cove then?
Absolutely, it's the only place it goes.
Okay.
Goes from my pond right down to the.
Broad Cove, this is why I showed you that.
It's there because it's supposed to be there.
No, but that's what he, he's gonna create a problem with that.
I'm not gonna create a problem with that.
Okay, well, this.
That guy right there, we'll tell him where the binopile ought to be, on my property.
And I would ask each member to sign the conflict of interest sheet that you all have in your packet.
I started, okay.
I don't have to hear it, just send it.
Charlie, is that a new one, if you've already signed one?
Yep, gotta sign the.
It's in your packet, in there.
But if I've already signed one, I need to sign it again?
It's there somewhere.
Yeah, I have it, but I've already signed it in the past.
No, I just got it every year.
It just proves you got it, that's it.
I don't have one of them.
Tell them, click.
No.
I just printed my name, I didn't.
I don't know what I'd do if you weren't here, John.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And put that in, Dick?
Yeah.
But, more hate.
It's been a lot of.
That's at eighty-eight.
One eight twenty.
I just signed it in here.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't have mine for.
Now we can give Brian an undivided attention.
That's right, that's it?
Yep.
Okay, I think I'll be your easiest matters. So for the past four years, the Taunton River Watershed Alliance has been conducting research on the Diamondback terrapins, so a state-listed, state-threatening trout that lives in the estuaries of our coastlines from Wellfleet Cape Cod to Corpus Christi, Texas. There's a sizable population, we think, in the Taunton River. We've been trapping them, tagging them, measuring them, releasing them in an effort cooperatively with Mass Wildlife to try to get an understanding of the population in the Taunton River. Work had been done ten, fifteen years ago in Assonet Bay. A little bit of work, but there are no population estimates. We've identified three nesting areas that no one seemed to know about before, at least not officially. One of them is in Broad Cove. So we do trap Assonet Bay, Broad Cove, and then the Taunton River main stem from Motherbrook, almost in Fall River on the Free Town side, up to the Three Mile River. So we're trying to figure out the size of the population, the age structure of the population, the sex structure of the population, and the distribution within the river. Like, what are they using, what parts of the river? Broad Cove nesting area has been our tough one. It's on the north side of the old railroad grade, where they come together, but the channel goes between them. And that's your property, right?
Yes.
They're nesting there, quite a few of them, which Bill brought to our attention, and we started looking there, and when we look at the right time, we find them there nesting. When we find them nesting, we protect the nest with some wire mesh, we stake it down, we mark it with a date, because we have to go back in ninety days and start looking for little ones to let them out. We have a nesting area in Assonet Bay that's in someone's backyard, and they're very, very enthusiastic supporters, and the guy does a lot of the work for us. We drop, we drop off materials to him and he takes care of it. Broad Cove's harder, because we're gonna carry everything in the boat, and we have all the other trapping equipment in the boat. So our request number one is, we'd like to just leave a tote with some equipment there, which would only be some wire mesh pieces, nothing worth money, and some ground staples, maybe some little metal tags to write on, and a hammer. But it's your property, so we didn't wanna just leave stuff out there. We wanted to ask you first. There's some opportunities for, in addition to Kaylee, one of our new interns, maybe some citizen scientists who might be interested in the town, and it would be just helping us catch them when they're there, so protecting that.
This nesting area, is it right inside the Pleasant Street Bridge?
Yeah, but it's, it's the, the little peninsula that sticks out.
So it's a railroad track?
Right on the railroad track, right from the very tip.
I think there's a stone bench there.
Yep, there is, right where the stone bench, well, from there.
Because the first property is not ours, it's private, the marshy area.
Right.
First, okay.
So they don't nest in the marsh, they only nest where it's high and dry.
They nest right up on the railroad bed.
Right, so when they, whenever they put that railroad bed in, a long time ago, they probably created this little run of nesting habitat, because they need that high and dry sandy place to nest. So because we could only get at it from the boat, we're hoping to just leave a tote with some of that equipment there, if that would be acceptable to you folks as the property owners.
I certainly don't mind.
I don't have a problem.
That'd be fine.
So long as you mark it, so that no one.
Yeah.
Messes around with, that's all.
And, and we understand, someone might mess around with it, and so it goes. But we've only ever been able to protect half of a nest there, and we got, I think, two hatchlings, where we've gotten a hundred out of Assonet Bay, we've been able to protect them, let them incubate right in the ground and let them out.
What is it, raccoons and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, raccoons, coyotes, skunks, that all decimate them. So that's the first request. The second request is, we do have a whole slideshow, we got Taunton River watershed, and the Aggie School, we have a couple of live terrapins that we have permits to have for education animals. If we were, would like to offer the Conservation Commission, uh and all you would have to do is uh, we could put you on as a co-host. We could deliver the presentation at the library or the school or here one night for just the town, for people who are interested to know about these, these turtles in their backyard. If you haven't seen one, it'll blow your mind, you won't believe it's a real thing. They have, you know, some of them have bright white skin with black lava, lava lamp marks on them and, and uh you, you won't believe the thing lives around here. Um, we only, we only have males that are this big, but the females are about five pounds, some of our big females. So we have a whole slide presentation, we can bring live turtles, we can bring the traps and the, and uh, and just do that for the town for, for the pleasure of telling people about their own backyard. And if you guys would like to co-host it, it would, you'd have to do nothing, we'd just say we're co-hosting it together, you and the TRWA. The Taunton River Watershed Alliance.
I'd like to do that, cause I, I know a, a number of people that are interested. And, and I'm, I'm sure they'd love to come.
Yeah, we can work out the, the particulars later.
Yeah.
Um, and uh we could do all that for you guys or with you guys.
Okay. Are these migratory or are they?
No, no, well, we're not sure, and that's one of the things we're trying to figure out. We'll show you in the, in the, when we do this evening, we tag them, we put in a pit tag, a passive integrated transponder. Um, and it's a little, your, your, your dog might have it, your vet calls it a microchip, same thing. So we put that in their back leg up near their, near their rump and we scan them. What we're trying to figure out is where they go in the river. So right now, we don't think they're going upstream of the Berkeley Bridge, but we're gonna add a couple of traps uh to see. And to see how that might change as sea levels rise. You know, does the saltwater wedge go farther upstream and now the terrapins start going upstream? Um, we don't know how far south they go. They probably go right down to Mount Hope Bay. And then if they do, right over in um Hundred Acre Cove, there's a big population that uh some folks at URI have been studying for thirty years. So do ours ever mix with theirs, do theirs mix with ours? We found now that we have animals moving from Broad Cove to Assonet Bay, from moving from Grassy Island to Assonet Bay, so they're moving all around from Grassy Island to Mother Brook. Um, and we're gonna add some more traps to try to figure out how far they're going and how many there are.
They move that great a distance.
We've got them moving, um, I think five miles, we had one move. Now that's over at least a year. I don't know the exact dates where we captured it or recaptured, but that's at least a year. So they're, they're moving around quite a bit.
Do you have problems by these pogue motors that net?
Um, I don't know, I mean, these are the big commish- commercial guys out there. Um, we see them out there, uh, we only trap, we end our trapping usually by August first because we don't really catch many in August. We start trapping slightly in May um where some of our, our younger folks, they go out and kayak around. Once school's out, cause they work at the Aggie School, once school's out, I can then join them with the motorboat. So the school lets us use the school's motorboat to, to do this work. Um, so that's why we put a lot of traps out, we put like fifteen traps out. We've seen them out there. I'd love to get, I wish I could get on there and just see what they're scooping up. Um, that's one of the things we're trying to figure out is um how big is the population and is it increasing, stable, or decreasing? We have no idea. No, the state has no idea. So actually, we're having another meeting with Mass Wildlife next week, a week from today, to plan. Look, they're all excited about it, to plan this, so. This will be our fifth.
Who did, Ark Bay is the only folks that are pogue fishing in the river.
Yeah.
You know, on the big commercial scale.
I, I, I think wouldn't be that really.
No, no, they're, they stop at uh, they actually stop right at Somerset Marina.
Yeah, just south of Conspiracy Island.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're out in the big water, I don't, I, I bet they, they don't often bump into a turtle, but they do move around. Um, the males only get about this big and we don't catch many of them. Right now, we have a very skewed sex ratio, which is odd, we have a lot of females. But the females are big, so we think they're swimming out in the, in the open water because nothing's gonna bother them. The little males, um, you know, who knows, a big striper might easily take one of those or, or, I mean, the place is full of ospreys and eagles now. Um, they might pick up a little male. Um, so we have a, we, I think we figured out how to catch more males. And that's something we're interested in, to see if the sex ratio is really skewed that way. Um, or if it's just where we're not, where our methods are biased towards the big females, so. But we can work out a, a, an evening or an afternoon, a Saturday, Sunday afternoon, it's easy for me now and it moves to Dayton in March, so.
Yeah, that's right, Dayton resident.
Yeah, we bought an old house on Walker Street, so. Well, I'm happy to help out the town now.
Library was not open on Sunday.
Okay, well, I'm sure I could.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, I'd like to say I'm sure I could get uh room at the Aggie School, but sometimes it gets busy there. But I mean, I guess that's how we can, we can work it out.
Is that something you consider during the open house? Is it in the fall? Does that make sense where you get uh a lot of passerby's?
You get a lot, you get a big population.
Um, we, we could, that's usually more of the, the school stuff and this, this is not so much, other than the school letting us use the boat. Um, this, this project is more of a Taunton River Watershed project, um Watershed Alliance project and.
I noticed they have one for a pet.
I'm sorry, what?
One of the turtles.
Yeah, there was um one of our students who works for a wildlife rehab center now, she called a year ago and said, hey, we have one and the state doesn't want it released, it was surrendered to them. It's illegal to keep, someone had it and gave it in and uh we have three that live in the museum. I don't need anymore.
What do you feel?
Um, just commercial aquaculture food. And uh, so I had, the Taunton River Watershed Alliance wanted one for this effort to use as an education animal. And so uh they got some equipment and we got it set up. In fact, I had to go check on it, I heard the filter's not working so well, so. So that'd be about leaving the box on the, somewhere in the area, that stone bench and um.
Yeah, put it under that stone bench, help protect it a little bit.
We could try that, um.
Now, is there a pathway just to the north of the loop around?
Well, you, you gotta watch the tide and you gotta, you gotta go in along the elder, elder line from the road.
Okay. And uh, yeah, we've always just pulled up with the boat because we're in the Cove checking traps. Um, so we'll pull up, um, if it's sort of nesting time. And uh, we have, we have found them there. Unfortunately, we usually get there late and, you know, the nest's already gone. But for the few times that we found a good nest, we wanna be able to protect it, try to get some more, some more recruitment out of the, the Broad Cove nesting area.
Good, that's what we would like to.
All right.
Now, okay, um, I mean, I'm thinking we, this property that we just voted on, that has a small Highland area, I don't know if it would be.
No, they, 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 they need brackish water and, and they need a stream, a stream coming into the salt.
Are you kind of for nesting?
Yeah.
Um, if it's, if it's open, so it's very sunny and it's, you know, sort of sandy. Yeah, if it's, if it's shady, they, they not gonna nest there.
They do, they go over there.
But um.
They need the sun to incubate.
Yeah, they want it out in the sun, um.
To the end of that railroad bed that's just out is perfect.
Yeah, it's pretty good there.
Now, okay, here's something, could it be that, I mean, fifty feet, hundred feet, could that whole area just be fenced off? To keep the um.
To keep the, it's very funny, we talked about that uh with US Fish and Wildlife Service for a different species in Plymouth. Um, they have a similar topography. Um, maybe, but I assume you want to make that accessible for the public so the public can enjoy it.
Someday we will, yeah.
Um.
No, I mean, just, just where, where they're gonna nest on that, on that incline.
Oh, well, they nest, they nest pretty far north up that railroad grade, farther than I would have guessed.
Where, where, where you would, where, where the old right of way used to be across from Suzer's property.
Yep.
Uh, they nest all the way to there from the point, all the way to that, uh, where the Suzer property.
Almost behind the um the first house that you would come to. If you walk in the railroad bed, that house is off here, right? Almost all the way to, you're behind that first house.
Exactly.
They'll nest, they're all the way down to the point. And, and quite a few up on that north side of it. I was surprised.
And, 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 and uh, in Hundred Acre Cove.
Yep.
They travel over half a mile to get to a nesting site.
Wow.
And they go up a hill.
Yeah, they go up a big hill.
So this is a, this is a pretty good spot, um.
Yeah.
And there's, there's three sites in Assonet Bay and this is the only one we know of in Broad Cove. There might be others, but we don't know about it.
I don't know whether they.
Yeah, we sent out postcards, Taunton River Watershed Alliance sent out postcards. I sat on the computer one night going through all the.
Property owners there?
Yeah, all the way down and uh, we got one hit back from Somerset, just south of, of the line. Said she's seen him in her eyes, oh, you see one, like call this number. Keep an eye on it, we wanna protect your nest. Um, but you gotta be there, right, you know, in that, about June. Perfect, is it like ten in the morning if it's a high tide?
I got, I got a, I got a friend like Eel Gibbons.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's a real, he knows exactly when they're going to nest.
Yeah.
In Assonet.
Well, and that's what we'd like.
According to the tide and temperature and he, he.
And we'd love to involve people like that.
Yeah, I, I wanna.
Yeah.
If he'd be here tonight.
People who.
He'll lay on the beach in the dock and wait till the sun comes up and come the ones that are coming up the beach and he.
And, and if people are there and they have the time, cause a lot of that's just the time. So if, you know, if someone likes to hang out there and bring a, bring a folding chair and wait and when they see him, you know, we'll show them how to, how to do the nest protection, it's pretty simple. Um, and uh.
They get elaborate in Bristol.
They do.
They do.
They use a big cylinder.
About this high and.
Yep.
Foot and a half, way a foot and a half and.
And they're, they have.
People monitor, monitoring them every day.
But I noticed, I'll tell you, digging holes on Walker Street, I wouldn't wanna dig those in in Dayton, boy, there's some rocks in this ground. I've learned it the hard way. Um, but yeah, any, you know, families with kids, uh retired folks who have time to be there, whoever would like to be um involved, we like to get the, the citizens involved. So, like I said, we got that one guy, thankfully, they nested in his backyard and uh he's very, very supportive. He actually saw us trapping behind his house and he called UPOs and he thought we were like poaching turtles. So luckily it was, um, you know, Amarti, Steven Amarti, he had called, he's a big reptile nerd and he called me and said, I think this is your stuff. Tell me what it looks like. I said, oh, you're standing here and you can see this thing, this thing. He goes, yeah. Says, you gotta come see this guy Jack. It's full of nests and he's really interested in helping out. And he's been helping us for four years.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's really good.
So. That's it.
All right, thank you, Brian.
And um.
And, and, and let's get something organized so we can get the people together that we shouldn't get together.
Yep, and if you wanna work on that other guest that you talked about, whatever's works for that person. And it doesn't have to be soon, we could do a month or two from now, it doesn't matter to me. The presentations in, in the flash drive ready to go and the turtles live in the museum at the Aggie School, so.
Good, good, good.
I got one chestnut. Burr, what do you call it, what do you call it?
Burr.
And uh, I put a little net around it. By the time I got there, uh, two of the nuts are falling out and we're going.
On the trees you planted?
No.
Oh.
Over here. Uh, oh, actually, actually right up front. So I got one nut in my garage hanging in the cold air.
You're making Bill giggle here.
Okay, so I'm gonna plant that in the spring.
Yep.
And then I'll put it out here if I get it to grow. And hopefully this year I'll get some more and what I wanna do is, is put them up on chestnuts tree. We have a town property on uh.
Yep. Just rodent protected, because everything in the world wants to eat those chestnuts. Everything is programmed around here to eat chestnuts.
Me too.
Yeah, they're good. And if you've never had the American chestnuts, they taste totally different.
I know.
They're sweet, they're like golden raisins. Used to be free. All right, well, thank you very much, I won't take up much while you're talking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll email you about, um, we'll set up a, okay, time. All right, thank you.
All right, Brian.
Anything else, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion for adjournment.
Second?
All in favor?